Okay, we're ready to begin.
Okay, good evening, I'm calling to order the September sixteenth meeting of the South Borough Select Board. And the first item on our agenda is public comment, so this is an opportunity for members of the public who wish to offer a comment about a matter that's not on the agenda and for the item about the warrant, we're going to be talking about, you know, what articles are going to be on the warrant, so if you want to talk about that, that's when we'll speak to that issue, so, and we try to keep public comments to three minutes, it's not intended as a back and forth with the board, just an opportunity for members of the public to comment, so is there anyone here? Or in the online audience who wishes to raise their hand and speak? All right, Claire?
Good evening, Claire Reynolds, one oh four Main Street. I am talking tonight about following up on the post that I put yesterday on my South Borough, just in case you missed it. I talked about last night's planning board meeting being an excellent opportunity to show support for addressing the residents' concerns about their real estate tax burden and partnering with the successful and professional development firm, Atlantic Management. As Alan Belniak, who is a member of the planning board, wrote, and also Al Hamilton has posted the previous week, last week, this is an opportunity to begin laying the foundation for a greatly needed undertaking. Last night was a chance for residents to participate in the meeting, it was a public hearing. While I was the only person who commented, I think it's because there was so much information that was put out there that people really have not been following this. The reason I'm speaking tonight is because we had, South Borough has the opportunity of a lifetime to be able to partner with a firm such as Atlantic Management. They are a professional development, if you just take a mile and a half trip right up to four ninety-five to see the work that they have done up at the old, well, back when I worked for digital, the old digital firm, and the work that they have done there, they know what they're doing. Here's the problem, last night at the planning board meeting, I was concerned that there were a few people, planning board members, who felt that this was being rushed through and that the developer was dictating the terms. Could not be more incorrect, I guess is the word, as early as June, this has been on the planning board agenda.
Okay, so you're, I will, we're trying to keep the comments to three minutes, so.
Am I over three minutes?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay, can I just wrap up?
You can, you can just wrap up.
Okay, in wrapping up, I urge you to get educated on this and to see what we have as an opportunity to advance development of the Dell EMC property along Route nine, thank you.
Thank you, so in terms of the agenda, I'd like to maybe advance one item here for, that Mr. Robbins has, this is, I just want to give a quick chair's report about. I recently got an email from one of our former select board colleagues, Dan Kalenda, recognizing Chris Robbins for cleaning up the Lundblad Memorial, that's a it's on Parkerville Road and it's a memorial to John Lundblad, who is a dedicated military veteran of town's first town administrator, and the monument had fell into state of disrepair, wasn't kept up very well, well, and Chris took the initiative to help clean it up and work with Bill Kondiff to put it in a state where it's going to be regularly maintained, so Dan had suggested that we maybe try to work with the net, with recreation to try to put together maybe some rededication ceremony sometime in the near future, and Chris is here, and I understand you're with Mrs., Mrs. Lundblad is here as well, so we just wanted to express our appreciation for what you've done, and we look forward to maybe having a short rededication ceremony sometime soon. All right, Chris, is there anything you want to add to that, or?
Yeah.
Sure. I wanted to go there.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here this evening and to represent and be with Mrs. Lundblad, whose husband served nobly in this town as our first town administrator and was deeply involved in the greater community. I happen to live a few houses from the memorial that I, I've been there since, for years, and never knew what it was until this lady, who I didn't know, was picking up leaves. I asked her to come to my house, I had lots of leaves, we chuckled, and then I decided to research her and found out what a distinguished citizen that plaque that's on the rock represents. Every time I asked about him, I always heard great kudos and his commitment to this town and this country as a Vietnam War veteran, so myself and Steve Nelson, who lives down the street, spent a day cleaning this place up, and then we got all sorts of help, Mugford's picked out some flowers, Weston Nursery picked out the mulch. We had a guy come over and straighten out the granite seating that was not straight, and people were very excited. People, if you haven't seen it, go down Parkerville Road, but it's a dedication to a person who gave enormously to this town and to his country, and a rededication and having Mrs. Lundblad, perhaps she could say a few words?
Had one in here, it's been searched. No, I just wanted to thank all the volunteers who helped with this project, I think it's actually a very nice story, and I, I think we're at a, a time with so much tumult in this country. It's, this is a nice story about people just volunteering, doing something for the greater good and exhibiting incredible kindness. And I have been sort of the caretaker of the garden since the monument was put in, I think, under John Bowlen's stewardship about twenty-five years ago, and I've tried to take care of it a lot, I, but we had some very difficult winter kill last year, and we lost like four huge plants, and I really do appreciate the fact that people who lived on Parkerville Road and some people involved in the landscaping industry came together and did a very kind and nice effort, and I'm very appreciative and grateful, and thank you.
All right, thank you, so the next item on the agenda is to we have two appointments for committees and Brenna Pearson. I understand you've come forward, volunteered for the golf course committee?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so basically, could you, if you could just briefly, you know, introduce yourself and explain why you're interested in this position?
Yeah, absolutely, so I'm Brenna Pearson, I live at twenty-two Lata Squama Road, so across from the golf course. And as such, I want to, you know, be part of the golf course committee to, you know, have an understanding of what's going on, with decisions being made around the golf course, be able to help represent not only my opinions, but the opinions of my neighbors as it pertains to kind of the activities on the golf course and how those spill into the neighborhood. Making sure that, you know, things like fencing or, you know, safety with golf balls, those kind of concerns that arise are addressed, and then also, you know, as a user of the golf course, both kind of a bit in season, but a lot off-season, you know, want to, you know, make sure to, you know, help with the, the maintenance and growth of the golf course.
All right, anyone have any questions?
I've got one requirement to remind her of.
Okay.
So Brenna, you know that we do require a handicap of ten or less for anyone on the golf committee?
Okay.
Just joking, so now I'm glad you play golf, I'm more interested in it, but this is, this is great, it's a good committee, so I think you'll enjoy being on it, and golf course is doing great, every year, revenue keeps going up, so we, we, it's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah, I've got some practice to do, I took some lessons last year, but still a little, not as good as I would like to be.
It's a fickle game, so.
Al or Tim?
Questions?
All right, well, I would move that we appoint Brenna Pearson to the golf course committee for a term to expire June thirtieth.
Second.
All those in favor? Yep. Ah, yes. I know we got to work out a date, and so how about if you can suggest some dates, you know, I'm thinking maybe like a Saturday morning that could work for you and group, and we can work together, I mean, maybe get it, do it in the next month or so. All right, great.
Before cold weather.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lundblad. Okay, and Michelle, why don't you come forward, so Michelle has volunteered to serve on the tricentennial committee, and I had the pleasure of meeting her at our last tricentennial committee meeting, she's got a lot of great experience, particularly in marketing, so wanted her to just have an opportunity to speak a little bit about herself and why she, why you'd like to be on the tricentennial committee.
Sure, good evening, everybody, my name's Michelle Oldershaw, my address is one four one one Madison Place. I'm a relatively newer resident to South Borough, my family's been here a year. We've come from Lexington, Massachusetts, so certainly no strangers to amazing towns with great celebrations. And as I was starting to learn more about South Borough before we moved last year, there was lots of information about the initial seeds of this planning and was very excited and immediately knew that this would be a, a great opportunity for me to be able to get to know more about the community, meet community members, and hopefully would find that, that the skill set that I might be able to bring to the committee would be of value. I have a background in marketing, event planning, and project management. I have worked with different town governments on projects, nonprofits, and different corporations from startups all the way through companies that are going to sale. So I do really enjoy the process of really building a brand and helping to, to execute that, to build excitement for events, to help draw participation, and to really help ultimately bring community together.
Well, I think you'd be a great addition to the committee.
Were you there at the last meeting?
I was, yes, just as a participant in the audience section.
Okay, so you heard all that was going on, I mean, you definitely are a welcome addition to this, they, they've got big plans as far as the celebrations, so yes, we need, we need more people like you, so that's great.
Great, good.
All right, anyone have any questions? Okay, I move that we appoint Michelle Oldershaw to the tricentennial committee for a term to expire June thirty, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Excellent, thank you.
Vanessa, is Don here? Okay, so the next item on the agenda was a tricentennial committee update from Don, but he is not here right now, so maybe we'll just table that. And the next item on the agenda is Matt Probst of the Municipal Technology Committee, our MTC Chair, worked with Laura Kaufman from the school committee and Al on the NERE survey, and Matt has, Matt has done some further analysis with Laura and wanted to share that with us, the, his, the report that was generated is in the packet. But I'm going to turn it over to you, Matt, if that makes sense.
Sounds good. So first I want to thank, huge thanks to Laura Kaufman and Al for their partnership in designing the survey, promoting it, et cetera. And this, the, the analysis, the extensive analysis that we've done is in no way to take away from the analysis that has already been done, it's just basically to add additional color to the analysis that, that has been done. Either we can play or promote me to presenter, I'd be happy to promote, show my screen, join as analyst. I prepared a thirty-page deep analysis, I'm not going to go through that at all. I prepared a summary slide with just a few takeaways, don't want to take much time in this evening's meeting, but let me share the summary here. Quest, we're presenting. Share. Okay, so walking, quickly walking through the, the takeaways. Most people were familiar to some extent with the project, that's not surprising. Interesting, the, the, the sources of information for the projects, number one is word of mouth. Local news blog, et cetera, and we compared also the reliability, how reliable did people feel each of those sources were? And it's good or bad, that the number one source is word of mouth, but people recognize word of mouth was not the best source of information. The best, most reliable ratings were given to the town website, town meetings, local blog. Skipping down clarity of project details, this is perhaps, I don't know whether this was fed by misinformation or not enough clear communication about the project, but over fifty percent of the respondents said that it was either difficult or somewhat difficult to understand details of the project, and we say dot project details, the key information gaps in people's minds, and I know that lots of work was done, I don't, don't, don't mean to diminish anything from all the work that was done in promoting correct information on the project, but in people's minds from the survey said tax impact clarity, rationale for closing FIN, alternative options, what alternative options are there, environmental concerns and educational benefits, and, you know, the trade-offs in education, so that's just, I mean, don't shoot the messenger, that's what people were, were saying. Key opposite reasons for opposition and support, these don't come as any surprise, top opposition reason was cost too high. They want to see alternatives, they oppose closing FIN, believe there's insufficient justification, there's trust issues. They claim declining enrollment and environmental concerns, and of course, top reasons for support would be aging facilities, long-term value, protect quality, better environment, and state funding. Openness to reconsider. Obviously, the analysis has already been done, is that the original proposal, there's not much openness to reconsider, but modified proposal, definitely likely or extremely likely, sixty-eight percent would be, would be open to a mod, some sort of modified proposal. Skip over the attendance and voting. Skipping down to factors influencing future decisions, like what were the key factors that would influence voters in the future? Number one, the top is, no, no surprise, cost and tax impact. Second, student safety, safety, educational benefits, state funding preserves schools. Interest in the different alternative options, I think some analysis has already been done of this, but the two favorite options are either option D, expanding FIN for pre-K through K through three, or option B, and we can sort of pivot on parents versus non-parents. Obviously, there's a much greater difference in option B for parents versus non-parents. But between both parents and non-parents, option B and D are the most interesting. What is interesting is the least favorite option, as you probably already know, is the minimal renovation. Means we, they want to do something, just yeah. Communication engagement preferences, how would like, they like to receive information, this residence, email, newsletters, local blog, town website. And so the key conclusions, almost done. The project failed due to cost concerns and process issues, not educational merit. There's still a significant middle group, sixty-eight percent of residents feel that they could be persuadable to, and would consider an alternate option. Only thirty percent, only thirty-seven percent found the project easy to understand. And sixty percent of the opponents cited trust issues, and I think that's, those go to hand in hand, people who don't understand, like there's trust or something is being left out intentionally, et cetera. FIN closure was emotional trigger, some people thought, you know, why close it, it's not justified, and, you know, I grew up here and I, I want that school, et cetera. Parents, non-parents obviously have different priorities, so the key is finding middle ground between parents and non-parents. Some people were confused by the implications of the town meeting vote versus the poll vote, and they thought the ballot was, ballot was sixteen percent of non-voters thought the ballot was moot after town meeting failed. Our actionable takeaways, so I think this is, you know, why are we discussing this, it's already, what's done is done, well, what are the key takeaways, how can we improve moving forward? One is of sure, obviously refine the plan. The, the least favorite option is doing nothing or minimal, so people are interested in doing something. Rebuild trust through transparency, create fat myth versus fact resources, frequently asked questions, lists, publish cost comparison of all options, so people could understand the implications, costs, and where possible, implications on people's tax for all options. And then continuously engage the community, so use surveys like this one more frequently, and so we understand, and so it's less likely to go into a significant town meeting with, with with significant support on one side, not, without being aware. Obviously, use email, use channels that people prefer, such as email, blog, website, continue to use those. Target misconceptions, create personalized tax calculators, which I know has been done, and which was wonderful, but I don't think everybody made use of the personalized tax implicator, calculator to understand the, the real impact. Or in some cases, didn't trust it, I think. Clearly explain educational rationale for any grade reconfiguration, document each alternative, why each alternative was chosen or rejected, and of course, provide all the environmental mineral safety data, which I think was, my understanding was done, but some people don't believe that. Build a coalition to stakeholders, both parents and seniors who want affordability. Much earlier, ma, make participation easier, and I think we're, there's a lot of discussion about how they make participation in local town government easier, and we're discussing how to do that through technology and, and so forth. Meet people where they are, it's about how, how to communicate with them, focus on common ground, focus on the persuadable middle, and that is pretty much it. Any questions, comments?
I think it's an excellent report, I mean, I thought you presented the three takeaways pretty clearly, that three top drivers of the reason why it was not successful were cost, not considering cheaper alternatives, and opposition to closing FIN, right?
Um, Al? Thank you, yeah, that, good job, I, you know, so in addition to the, the work I did, which was very fast and preliminary, Mike Newt did a fairly detailed analysis, which he presented to the pre-K to eight committee, and, you know, they're all telling the same story, which, which is not surprising, it's the same story the voters told us. And the, the one sort of piece of data and advice that I have is an interesting fact, which is not part of the survey, but which came out of the town census, is that thirty-one percent of the households in the South Borough have a student that's between the ages of zero and fourteen, which is essentially the pre-K to eight, and sixty-nine percent of the households do not. And so you've got to build a program that speaks to that sixty-nine percent, if you want to get to the two-thirds of town meeting, and you've got to, you, you can't simply focus on, on parents and, and expect success. But, yeah, good job, thank you, appreciate it.
So I want to add on to what Al just said, but seven oh seven, how does that compare to other surveys you've done?
This is the largest response we've ever gotten from any of the surveys.
Okay, so pretty good response, okay, so Al, we've built schools before, and I don't know what the demographics look like with those other schools, but I'm sure it was still more non-school age voters than school age parent voters, maybe a little bit different, maybe when, what it is now, so some of those votes had troubles too, it took a couple times to get them through, but they still got through, so what's the difference between then and now?
So one of the interesting things, and I didn't do this, this just came out of Mike's analysis, is that if you look at age versus income, we have an inverted structure, which is to say the people with the highest incomes are the youngest people in town. And so it, it, it actually makes sense once you think about it, because it's like, one of these things, if you never thought about it, you, you, why would that be? And so I, I think, I think there is an income component to this, and I, I don't have all the answers, believe me. You can, you think I do, you talk to my wife, but the I think that the, the era when we built a lot of other schools, there was actually a different demographic, different demographic at work, we were actually
Seniors.
Well, we still had seniors, yes, but we had, wait, wait, but we, but what we were doing at that point was building schools for the echo of the baby boom. And that echo has passed, we are now in a baby trough, and so it may well be that, that age, that thirty-one percent may well have been much higher at the time, also the last time we built a school, reimbursement was quite a bit more generous.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, so, you know, that's important.
Well, it's not just reimbursement, remember there were two components, yes, we got half of that, but the construction costs are so much higher now than they were, and MSBA capped that at about six hundred dollars, when they were really eleven hundred dollars, so you had this cap you had to, to get under to begin with, and then you had the reimbursement rate, so the two things made the effective reimbursement rate much lower than what we had with the last three. But, I mean, you're right, when you think about it, this population is aging every place, it's not just here, it's every place, so there probably is a much bigger chunk in that older group than in the younger group, so that probably is something to factor in when the next decision is made, as, as far as what to come through.
Now, the good news is, and it comes out in Matt's survey and also in Mike's, is that there is a recognition in town that we have a problem, and we need to do something, we just need to figure out something that's palatable for all of the groups and all of the stakeholders. Nobody said it'd be easy. Nobody said it'd be easy.
Nope, it wouldn't, and it isn't.
Mark Reader, Tim, do you have anything you want to add?
I have nothing to add right now. Thank you.
So thank you, Matt. Thank you, Al, and thank you, Laura, for doing this. This is eye opening.
Thank you, and the MCC is always here to support on future surveys.
And we appreciate the help of the MTC and.
Always.
Doing these surveys.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the discussion of warrant articles for the October twenty-seven. Okay. Oh, Katie?
Hi, this is Katie Berry from Twenty-three Richards Road. I just wanted to comment on the survey. This is my third time seeing someone analyze it, and I thought it was great. The takeaways were great. I think we're moving in a positive direction as far as what the town needs and the demographics. And I think that's wonderful. The one thing that I have been saying throughout this whole process is how we speak about other people's opinions. So some of the misinformation that's listed in the report, to me, are actually legitimate concerns that just weren't adequately addressed enough for people to say yes to. So instead of calling that misinformation, that is actually legitimate concerns for a lot of people. Things like taxing out seniors, the near insight, the cost. Like those numbers to me were not solid. So saying that they were inflated or it was misinformation to me looks more like facts. And to me, that was pragmatic. So I just want to make sure that if people are looking at things and they're saying it's misinformation, those are legitimate concerns as well to a whole lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments on that? All right, so the next item on the agenda is the discussion of the warrant articles for the October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five special town meeting. So our process here, we have called a special town meeting on October twenty-seven, two thousand, for this coming. Next month, six thirty. It's a Monday night at Trotter. And the real kind of genesis of it was the proposal by Atlantic Management for their project on Coslin Drive. And then we've had other articles that we've worked up that are on the agenda. So I think the two that have the most kind of public interest at this moment are Article One, which is the Atlantic article. And I think there's several people who are here for the appropriation of former Atwood Water Tank site remediation. We'll speak about that as well. So first, Kathy, do you want to just give kind of an introduction to people about what Article One is? And, you know, some a recap of last night's meeting at the the last two planning board meetings?
Yes, I do. So I'm glad we've got a lot of people here tonight. I was hoping you guys weren't going to leave before we got to this one. So the project that Claire alluded to when she was doing a public comment, just to be clear, was announced last night, so it's Costco. Atlantic Management is in the process of completing negotiation of a lease for twenty-one Coslin. They are structuring the lease and the design so that the building itself will be all. That property is partly in Westborough, but they are going to build a building so that the building itself is all in Southborough. They've done that as an accommodation to us to try to keep the real estate tax revenue high for the Southborough side. So the article that we're about to talk about is needed to allow Costco to be built. You can't build Costco in this zone that twenty-one cousins in without this change. So we're hoping that this is going to be welcome news to the town. Atlantic is a very well-known, good development company. They have developed big projects around us, one in Marlborough, one in Westborough. Each of those generate now four million dollars in commercial tax revenue. When they took over, they were generating two hundred fifty thousand dollars of commercial tax revenue. They work closely with the towns. They want to work with the town. They don't want to come into a town unless the town wants them. So October twenty-seven, six thirty, we need two-thirds vote. So I'm hoping that we're going to get a whole lot of people there and get a whole lot of positive response to this. So not only are we going to help our commercial tax base, as anybody that's paid attention to Select Board and advisory over the past few years, you've heard us say, the only way we're going to be able to reduce the real estate tax burden on houses is to expand that commercial tax base. We need the denominator to be bigger. And this is a chance finally to do something that could be big, could truly be significant, could be a game changer. Costco is going to attract other businesses around there. If you go to wherever Costco is, you're going to see lots of good businesses around there that you would like. You know, Southborough's got a lack of a lot of commercial activity here. Where, you know, restaurants are closing, Tommaso's is now going to be a Chase Bank instead of another restaurant. So we need to attract this. It's in a good location. It's the Dale EMC land. That land has been unused for about seven years. EMC came to Southborough with big plans. They did not execute those plans. Dale bought them, then we hit COVID, so it's just kind of set there, doing nothing. So we're really hoping this is going to be a catalyst for a whole lot of good things and that we really are starting to turn the tide as far as trying to get some good commercial businesses in this town that we want. Here's a quick story. There's a club in town called the Dulmen's Club, meets on Fridays, good club, well-attended. And at one of the recent meetings, the, some of the guys are talking about how great the hearing aids are at Costco. Someone was at the meeting that heard them, and he knew it was Costco coming here, and he was just dying to say something, but he couldn't because this was not public until last night. They were going, but it's just too far away. Waltham is the closest Costco, and they don't want to drive there. So we're hoping for a lot of reasons, this is going to appeal to more than two-thirds of the people who come to town meetings. So I hope you guys come, and I hope you support that article. So what we're doing right now is tinkering with the language. It's a pretty simple article. You can read it, it's one page. Zoning articles usually are harder to understand. This one's not. Basically, this adds another use in that zone to allow Costco to be built. So this is integral. The timing is right. There are surrounding towns that would like to have the Costco there, so we want, we need to get it done now. And hope that ten twenty-seven will be a positive vote and gets us done.
And this is the first step in a process. So for this project, it first needs a zoning amendment, and that's what this is. And what the article would do is permit this use, which is basically for like a grocery store, retail store similar to Costco. Allow that in the industrial park zone by special permit. So. If the article passes, then Atlantic and Costco will seek this special permit. And then there'd be a hearing process that would be held to think about very, very detailed things like site plan review and parking and traffic and things like that. But that's not, that's at a later stage. This is the first step, and if this doesn't happen, then the project does not happen. Al?
Yeah. This is an opportunity that this site has been essentially vacant for thirty-plus years and heavily underutilized. It's no secret that the tax burden has been shifting onto residents for the last ten years. We used to be at eighty-twenty, I think we're at about eighty-four sixteen now, and it's headed in the wrong direction, largely because the office market is is in bad shape right now. And that's mostly what our commercial business is along Route Nine. The tax revenue is not insignificant, and the opportunity to bring more businesses into this area has Costco serves essentially as a magnet store is substantial, which means that the tax revenue that we can generate from that good if we fully develop that site equal the tax revenue that we receive from Route Nine. So. This is a chance to try to do something different than what we've been doing for the last thirty years, because what we've been doing for the last thirty years really just hasn't been working to our advantage. It's, and I think the opportunity to partner with the developer rather than treating them as as a pariah is 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 something that we should do. I've looked at the the sorts of development that Atlantic does. They're a major developer of commercial and industrial properties in eastern Massachusetts. You don't get to be that by just putting up flimsy buildings and what's called tofu drag. This is a quality developer, and I think, you know, I think that we ought to say welcome to Southborough to this organization and give this a try. Because what we've been doing for the last thirty years just hasn't been working.
The Select Board is fully behind this project, all five members. There is no daylight between us. It is, the traffic is great. They open at ten. Their busiest times are noon on Saturday, and if anybody is around Southborough on Saturdays, you see how dead it is here. So we think the traffic works well. It doesn't bother a residential neighborhood at all, so it's in a great location, corner of four ninety-five and Mass Pike. So it's kind of hard to find anything wrong with this project, I think. Everybody may not be a customer of Costco, but for those that are, I think this is good news. And if you're not, maybe you will be because they're going to put things in Southborough we don't have right now as far as groceries, et cetera.
Okay, but there has not yet been a vote from the planning board.
No, well, the planning board, remember what they've got to do is they've got to issue a report to town meeting. That's part of their, their charge, right? The meeting last night was disconcerting. Clearly a tale of two cities as far as planning board members, unfortunately. I hope that changes between now and town meeting. We will see. So I think it's got majority support, but it may not have unanimity as far as that goes. They're making some tweaks to it. And I'm looking at Mr. Mans when I say this, the, one of the tweaks is they want the planning board to be the permitting authority. So they ask the attorney for Atlantic last night to change that. They're actually going to put in the actual parcel numbers into this because there was concern that this would allow other IP areas to do things that are not necessarily conducive for those areas. So they've limited this so to this area. So we're hoping that has alleviated some concern as far as that piece of it goes. They're also, they've, they acknowledged last night that they need to bring a clean article to town meeting and not expect to have it amended or want to have it amended so that we don't end up with that having happened. So they've only got two more hearings left, but one of those is after the time we need to cut this off. So they've only got one left to close this out. But it should be, it should be very easy to do that with more hearing. I mean, what they were doing last night was fairly small stuff as far as I'm concerned.
And then the the hearing is, do you know when the hearing is scheduled?
Ninth.
October ninth?
What, today is what, sixteenth?
Yeah.
So last night was the special meeting, right? So last night doesn't count, fifteenth, so eighth, eighth, maybe the twenty-second, maybe it's the twenty-second, and then they have one more after that. And the one more after that is the one that's after the seventh. So that's, so I'm wrong. So they've got one more that's before October seventh, which is the twenty-second.
Okay, because October seventh is our date to sign a warrant.
And I think we need to remind them of that. They were, I'm not sure that they understood that last night.
So I'm hoping that we've only got twelve articles on on the warrant. And the last one may be just a placeholder. So I'd like to tonight hopefully just take as many votes as we can as a board. I think a lot of a lot of these we've already discussed, but for this article, sounds like we support it, but I think we should wait to take, see the final language before we take a vote.
And maybe get the ZVA to weigh in as far as this change that I just described. So.
Have we heard, or do we have an estimation? I'm just curious, I don't know if we have it yet. Is there an estimation of the total tax revenue of the property?
We will.
Thing would come forward?
Advisory is going to write a report. It's going to be in the report. So I'll tell you what was said to us the first day. So they got together with a group of of people that they are stakeholders here. There was no quarms, planning was there, select board was there, building commissioner was there, Paul Stabile was there, Mark was there. So the number that was thrown out was millions eventually. It won't be that with just the Costco building. The Costco building will be several hundred thousand bucks as far as tax revenue goes, but it's that growth around it that should end up with a pretty big number in the end. So we just have to see, as Joe Zink will tell you, Costco will beget a whole lot of other development around there. So it should be a pretty big number.
A number like enough to offset a school, potentially, like a school cost.
Enough to pay for the school?
Like enough to offset a school cost, like a project that we just looked at, right? Like a number up around there?
The number Joe Zink gave us would would have paid the debt service on what we did that failed, yes. But I don't want to hang my hat on that, and throw that out there. We should do some more work and have a number that we can all agree on that is at least a reasonable one to to show people.
Yeah, I looked at the BJ's and Costco's in immediate area out to Waltham and the likes. And they're typically assessed at between twenty and thirty million dollars as as an enterprise. And that would generate something in the neighborhood of three to four hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. And I think we should put that in context because all of Route Nine generates about three point six million dollars in tax revenue. So it's about ten percent of what we get from Route Nine. Now, that's just for the Costco, and that actually occupies a relatively modest portion of the Dell EMC land, so that there certainly is substantial, there's upside there as assuming that we can, that Atlantic can attract those other businesses which would treat Costco as as a magnet store. And which I think there's a good evidence that they can. I'm sure that that, but this is a test case. You know, we don't, we don't get any of that if we don't say yes to this this amendment, this zoning bylaw. And so I think, you know, we need to take the first step here.
So Al, don't forget, they've already bought thirty-two Coslin too, which is separate. In that one, itself is going to generate a lot of tax revenue. They've demoed the whole thing, they've, they've got some good tenants, they think they're going to take this space. So that's going to be there. So they really are invested in this town and would like to work with this town and continue this process in that area.
In case you haven't guessed, we're fairly enthusiastic.
Well, we have.
We've been looking for this for decades.
Said, no, this town is full of fixed costs. You want to get rid of teachers? What do you want to do to cut costs? It's as hard, it's people that are, that the budget is all about. And so if we don't add more to this base, then there's just no way to cut taxes. So this is one way to truly start turning that curve so that eighty-four sixteen starts coming back down again.
Okay. So we support this, we're waiting for the final language. There's, the next planning board meeting is September twenty-ninth. And does it make sense that, let's first see how the final planning board vote comes out, but that given that we are unanimously supportive of this, that we would also be willing to sponsor the article?
Absolutely.
I think we should.
So Articles Two and Three are more technical. Article Two is the article to allow funds from the golf revolving fund in excess of seventy-five thousand dollars each year to be used for general fund operating expenses. And is there a need to further discuss this?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a good audience here, let's talk about that one. So as everyone knows, we paid about five million dollars for the golf course. What, fifteen, sixteen, built the golf course or kept the golf course and built the public safety building. The golf course is doing very well. The revenue keeps going up year after year. This year, we're up over last year by a lot, it's like twenty percent that we're up. So this allows us to start pulling some money out of that revolving fund that our revenue goes into to use for general fund expenses and not just to maintain the golf course. So we're trying to make this a real investment. You know, one percent times five million is fifty thousand, so it's something. So again, we're trying to find new ways to generate revenue in this town so that we just don't rely almost solely on real estate tax revenue. So this article will allow us to pull money out and use it for other purposes and not just for the golf course.
Okay, I move that the Select Board support Article Two at town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, Article Three is the home rule petition to establish a board of cemetery commissioners. And everyone will remember our DPW superintendent, Bill Condev, had proposed that we do this so that kind of more sensitive issues about cemetery administration can be dealt with with a specialized board rather than the Select Board. Any questions or concerns about that? I move that the Select Board support Article Three at town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? So Article Four is the article to vote to appropriate from free cash a hundred thousand dollars for the engineering design bidding for the remediation work for the contaminating. for the remediation work for the contamination at the former Atwood Water Tank Site. And when we talked about this two weeks ago, that number was eighty-five thousand dollars. Sarah Warden, who is one of the residents at Atwood, had asked us a question whether that covers a remediation measure that had been recommended in the PAIR report. PAIR is our water consultant. And after that, we checked with Tim Tees at PAIR. And he, what he recommended is that we cover the most heavily impacted areas with filter fabric and either gravel or soil. And this is something the town could either do on its own or could contract out. And his best guess is that the work to do that is about fifteen thousand dollars. So he proposed you could just bump up the warrant article to a hundred thousand dollars. So I think there's, you know, two things to discuss here. One, Al, Al would like to fund that from a different source. So we talked about that, free cash or the water reserve. And then the Affordable Housing Trust Fund had previously voted to offer the town two hundred thousand dollars in exchange for giving that site, that parcel to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And that would basically function as a subsidy for the remediation effort. But I know there's been, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has recently taken a different position on that. So Doug, I don't know if you want to speak to that and just update people and just explain who you are as well.
Thank you, Doug Mans, Three Kilim Farm Lane, Southborough, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. So yeah, I'm just, I'm here representing the trust tonight. Just want to let everyone know that the trust did vote five to nothing to withdraw the offer of the two hundred thousand for the land. Partly, we did have a meeting last week. We also got more up to speed on the environmental contamination. It seems pretty clear, at least from the trust perspective, that the town needs more time to study and evaluate how to address the remediation. We also had a couple of neighbors that came to our meeting last. It was remote, but they did speak at the meeting too as well. So it just, again, there's not, not a lot of time before town, fall town meeting. And again, I think there's a lot more analysis to be done, you know, just from the town's perspective, separate of the Affordable Housing Trust perspective. But again, I think just more probably because there are some members here tonight are public. You know, the trust is, is definitely looking for land, right? You know, the trust has about nine hundred thousand dollars in funds and is wanting to do more than just a single family home type acquisition. We're really focused potentially on a fifty-five plus affordable, more cottage style. So again, we're exploring all options. And another opportunity came up that actually probably pushed this faster than we would have liked. But that may be going in a different direction. So at this point, I think, you know, just formally, we did vote to rescind, rescind the offer. You know, we'll, you know, let the town, you know, go forward with it. I think the good news just for maybe the board of selectmen to know or select board to know, my apologies on that, is that we've been approached by now at least three homeowners in the last probably six months. Longtime residents that have been in the town inquiring whether the trust would actually buy their homes. And so that's actually very interesting. It's great the word is out there. But we also are trying to find parcels that are more than just one single family home, right? That's not really our goal at the end of the day. So, but we're continuing to explore many options. This was just one of them. And, but at least for now, it's formally withdrawn. And, you know, we look forward to seeing what the select board does just generally with environmental contaminations. And again, part of it was for, there are funds available in the trust. If they could use to assist remediation, that also helps an affordable housing opportunity, great, because it would be not new tax paying. It's already funds that we have. So that was part of the rationale too. So anyways, but happy to answer any questions about that. But consider it a formal withdrawal. We're not looking for a warrant article for fall town meeting.
All right, thank you.
So yeah, in light of the withdrawal of the offer, my need to recuse myself, I think is now moot.
Okay.
Okay, you're back in. It's clear. So I don't have any questions.
Because I wanted to throw that up because there'd been a lot of, you know, questions from people, particularly neighborhoods. Is there going to be another article on the warrant that, that asks the town to transfer the property to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? It's not going to be on the warrant for this.
Not for fall town meeting.
Okay.
Yep. And again, I mean, we, we do, we meet monthly. Our meetings are public like anything else. We do meet remotely too as well. And we're happy to have neighbors or just general Southborough residents on. I mean, again, we're still, again, we're a newer committee. The select board used to be this committee, but town meeting changed that. And again, we're looking at several options. So this actually helps us just to explore. So we're having a lot of discussions, you know, and so it's been, it's been helpful for us at least.
So I mean, that's encouraging that the word is spreading about what, you know, the trust fund does and how your primary funding source is from the Community Preservation Act, right?
Yep. And the other thing too, we did finish our house, as you, as the select board knows, we finished the housing production plan, our five-year plan, which was updated, you know? I definitely encourage, I believe it's on the website. I have to double check, but residents should take a look at it. You know, there's many goals that we have. One of them also is lifting the cap on fifty-five plus housing as well too, but that won't be for fall town meeting. I mean, the planning board has elected for that to be in spring town meeting. But there are many ways for us to, you know, improve affordable housing opportunities. It just includes housing supply in general, which I think is important for this town because we all do have a housing crisis. So it's just part of a larger conversation that we're having.
All right, thanks. So is there any comment or questions for people before we talk about just Article Four as it is in the warrant? Which is just asking town meeting to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars to do the engineering work so that you can put together a bid package to then get a quote on the full remediation of the old water tower site? Yes?
This isn't appropriate at this point, but I would just like to say that I hope that when the engineering is done, there's some sampling of the abutters properties.
All right, thank you. But, but the, but the appropriation, we have an Article Four. This is just for the, the town property, right? Okay, so any?
Thanks to.
Carl?
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. In your closing, you said that, that, that you're going to be looking for them to do a quote for full remediation. Is that accurate? Are you going to look for a quote to do any maybe capping or other forms of mediation?
I don't real, I don't know.
We need to get Tim Tees back in here and talk to him about what he recommends should be done. So I don't think we have the answer to that.
Okay, thanks.
Can I, just based on a conversation with Bill Condev, there were two ways to go. One is capping partial remediation and testing. And, and the other one is full remediation, don't need any more testing. I think my sense of that conversation was, as I understood it, that it's actually economically more reasonable to do full remediation than it is to keep for, in perpetuity doing testing, if that's helpful.
Yeah, it's helpful. Would the town have to vote on that? Like, so if they can, when they come back, when they come back and they say, okay, full remediation is going to cost, because the report now says that estimate is between seven hundred and one point three million to do full remediation. So I just don't know how it works. So once they come back with the report, who, how does it go after that? Like, does the town vote on that to pay for that? How does that work?
Town votes on the money. Town meeting appropriates the money, but the select board will bring forth the article as far as what we're asking for and how to do it.
That would be a separate article at a future town meeting with unfortunately a bigger number attached to it than this, a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
On the other hand, I think there's a lot of awareness of the neighborhood's concerns.
Awesome. Thanks for your help.
Thanks, Carl.
Do, do we not have enough information from the initial PAR report to be able to do this? That we could put that hundred or most of that hundred K into doing an action item versus an engineering study?
Well, we know that the, this, this is a article to actually really get it going, okay?
To design it.
To design it.
Yeah, so we don't know enough from that initial research that, that first report that we, the PAR report, to have any action item.
Okay, yeah. We know where the problem is and roughly the scope of the problem. We don't yet know what we want to do about it.
So I think it does make sense probably between now and the October twenty-seventh to ask Tim to come and get into the details of this a little bit further. So we can make a more informed presentation about this article at town meeting. Okay. So with that said, would the board like, should we take a vote on article?
Well, hold on. It sounds like we need to talk about how to fund it.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, so I believe that the source of funding here is inappropriate. We've operated a public water supply system for something on the order of a hundred years. And in that hundred years, there are portions of the town that have never benefited from access to that water supply, including my neighborhood in Pine Hill Road. And I think it is inappropriate to ask people who have never had access to the system. This problem resides, has happened solely from the process of operating a public water supply system. So I think it's inappropriate to ask people who have never had access to that public water supply system to pay for a problem that resulted from the operation of that public water supply system. That is, the properties that benefited from access to a water supply system should pay the full costs of those. It's a modest difference, but there are, it's not only my, my neighborhood. There are places on Parkerville. I believe there are places on Oregon Road. And there are other properties in town that do not have access either to public drinking water or fire protection from fire hydrants. And so I think it's inappropriate to ask those people who've never had access. So the alternative would be to pay for this out of water reserves. And there is a reserve fund in, that, that is collected or as a special assessment. So that those that benefited from the access to the water supply system pay for the full costs of that water supply system.
So Al, are you saying that just the hundred, are you saying the whole cleanup should come out of the water?
I think the whole cleanup should come out of it.
To be consistent, you'd have to say that.
Yes, yeah. You know, like I said, you know, no, the seventy-five or so households in my neighborhood don't have access to this. We don't have fire hydrants. We don't have public drinking water. We all have to maintain the costs of wells, which is not free. We have to pay for our own electricity to pump the water. And when the, when the well fails, we, it's on us to replace the well pump and at, at the cost of thousands of dollars. Whereas if the water main fails, the town comes and the water department comes and, and repairs the water department. So this is different from other public amenities. So for example, I don't use the schools, but if I adopted a child tomorrow, I would have full access to those schools. But I have no means of having access to the public water supply system.
So you made a good case. I am kind of, I'm not sure, because it still is town land. You know, it's a shame that this happened, but it is town land that the pollution's on. Maybe bring Bill Condev in here with Tim and let's talk about that with Bill too. Because I, I, I don't want to shove this down Bill's throat. I think Bill should be part of this discussion. But Al's made a good argument. Let's just see what Bill's got to say so he's part of deciding what to do here. But I agree. It's either all, it's all or nothing.
Yes. Hi, my name's Anne. I live on Atwood Road, fifty-four Atwood Road, Anatomium. So it's a very interesting point, Al, that you mentioned, but it is public land. And you are right, you're not using public water. But it is an entity that was built there that was to service a part of the town for public usage. That means the taxpayers built it. The taxpayers put it down. Now, we are all have to pay for the renovation or the remediation. Tobin Bridge is the same situation. The taxpayers built it. The taxpayers pay for all the lead paint that peels off of that and maintains it, all the debris that comes off that bridge. And it's an annual maintenance from that. Unfortunately, it is a mass DEP requirement to have that renovated and remediated. It's not a choice. It is a mass, it chooses requirement. So I disagree with you on that. I don't think we have a choice in the matter. It has to be required. That's my point of view.
Thank you.
Just to be clear, I, I'm not arguing that we not do it. I'm nearly occupying.
We agree. We agree. It says what pot of money is it going to come out of, donor fund or water fund?
My, my view is to fund it from free cash, okay? Because I think that ultimately, mass, mass DEP, they're going to fine us or take some enforcement action against the town. It's not just going to be, you know, against ninety-two percent of the town. It'll be just against a hundred percent of the town. But I think you make a good point. So that's just my view and we'll see how everyone feels.
I'm leaning toward Al's one of you here, but I do want to hear what Mr. Condev says.
Okay. I, I don't know what, I think I know what Bill thinks, but I'm not sure.
Well, this is here in public, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't support taking it out of the water fund. I think it's very divisive. It's going to be, oh, you get public water, therefore you have to pay for it. That's, we're a town. You know, there's always going to be something that someone's paying for that they're not directly responsible for. I think it's very divisive to say water users should pay for this. We should all just bite the bullet and pay for it.
I'm on the, what's the future use of the property? If the property is going to be useful for everybody in town after it's done, everybody in town should be paying for the remediation to use it for the next purpose. So I'm thinking about the next purpose more than the immediate need.
So.
I don't think it's three, one, and one that's on the fence.
Okay, how about this? We could, Bill could come to our meeting on October seventh. He could address your concern, Kathy. And then we just keep the language as is. And then if the vote of the board is to fund it from the water reserve, then we can make that change and just do it right on the spot when we sign the warrant. That sound good? So we'll, we'll hold on voting on Article Four?
Sure.
But we at least support doing this. It's just a question of we're going to pay for it, okay?
There's no question. We know it needs to be fixed.
So Sarah, do you understand? We have addressed your concern and we've gone back and looked at what we should have done before. And so the intermediate remediation is going to be funded now.
Okay. So Articles Five, Six, and Seven are really all kind of one package that have to do with adjustments to the SAP, the Salary Administration Plan, which is the bylaw that governs the salary and benefits of town employees that are not part of collective bargaining agreements or on a contract. And this, they are all part of a recommendation from the Personnel Board about how we can make the Salary Administration Plan more fair, particularly for a group of employees who have worked for the town for a very long time and have just the way that the SAP has been dealt with over the past couple of years are probably undercompensated. And we want to keep them, recognizing that turnover is almost always more expensive than just keeping a valued employee. So these are things that we've talked about in prior meetings. And I think we could just group them and maybe take a vote on them unless anyone wants to take another stab at providing it, you know, further explanation of it or other comment.
Well, let's talk about Five. Let's talk about Seven, sorry. I think my glasses on. Just to be clear, what happened is the, those employees that are affected here weren't put on the right step because we stopped doing that for many years. And then new people have come in and they've come in at higher steps and people have been here for a long time. So we're just trying to be equitable and get people on the right step. So there, it's a very specific thing we're trying to adjust here to get people where they should be as far as our grade and step system. Do you agree with that, Vanessa? Okay.
You did a better job explaining that than I attempted to do.
You did good too.
Can I say also there are eleven employees who are affected? That's all.
So I, I move that the board support at town meeting Articles Five, Six, and Seven?
Second.
All those in favor? So Article Eight. So Article eight is an appropriation from cable funds. And these are funds from the, uh, I'm not remembering the correct term.
PEG.
Yeah, okay. Uh, the PEG funds that the Verizon's and uh,
Verizon Charter.
Verizon Charter and Comcast, yeah. Pay for the privilege of providing service here and uh, in other words, Sam, okay, Supper Access Media. An appropriation to update the AV equipment in this hearing room so that we can do a more modern job of producing and recording in person and hybrid public meetings. Because before COVID, we just did things the old fashioned way of everything was in person. If you wanted to comment, you'd actually drive here and show up. Now every town in Massachusetts has moved to this hybrid format. And we're trying to modernize the equipment so that it can be more like kind of a private company of all the technology works together. So we just still have a blank for the correct amount of money and Tim, I don't know if you can provide an update. We're trying to get a consensus here of, you know, the Select Board. Our uh, Jay, our, our, our IT manager and MTC, Municipal Technology Committee.
Yeah, so the update here is Jay has a couple quotes that he's asked for updates on. We believe we are sharpening the pencil on those quotes and uh, if you'd want to add any more clarity to what we're kind of looking at. But the general consensus is these quotes were asked for a little while ago. It's taken some time. Um, some updates have been needed from when this was first started to where we would like to see it go in the future. And uh, Matt, Jay and I were talking about it and we haven't really like landed in the specific spot yet, but we're, we were moving. So Jay, if you have anything else to add?
Uh, not much more. Um, with, like I said, uh, like you said, um, we did have to get the quotes again. Um, obviously things have changed. Prices have gone up, so we're just dealing with some of that. And also just working with, with the MTC, um, on trying to figure out the, the best collaboration for this room. I could say a number, but we kind of like, we're, we're in that ballpark, you know what I mean? And just trying to figure out what that number could be exactly. Maybe a couple more meetings of understanding what the best layout here is going to be. So.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the users of the space are going to be represented well, so that way it works for everything. And if there might need to be like a professional mode, something where we want, you know, Sam to be able to control the cameras a bit more fine tuned for a more uh, high level meeting, uh, that might be something to incorporate. So there's just some more discussion to be had about the final numbers of where this might land.
Yep.
So to add some numbers to this, um, I'm gonna throw a number out because it's important for the next article. So we've probably got three hundred thousand dollars right now in the PEG accounts that we've been collecting for quite a while. And this is the first time since we realized we weren't doing it right, that uh, we're going to appropriate this money at a, at a tail meeting. This is not coming out of tax revenue. This is the PEG money that's coming out of, so it's not, this is not affecting anybody's taxes. So what we've got to do is make sure we know what that number is, subtract what you need, and then therefore let Sam know what the most is they can ask for. They're putting together a budget. So they're going to be specific about what they want, but they've got to know what their cap is. That's why it's important to get your number first, so they know what they can ask for in the next article. So this may come pretty late as far as those two numbers, especially the Sam number, because their number is going to be derived from what Matt and Jay come up with. So are we gonna get minutes out of this, Matt?
Well, that, that, that is definitely the plan. I mean, currently we do have the ability to get the minutes from the meetings currently. With, even with what we're doing currently right now with recording this in Zoom, it does create a transcript file in there for you to, to review. So again, it would be something that would embed what we currently are using with Zoom and, and get that transcript out of there as well.
So we put quite a bit of money for minutes, you know, so if we could cut that cost, this would, you know, help underwrite the cost of doing this.
That's all the pre K to eight meetings I've been going. I've been pulling the transcript file, running it through AI, processing it against a template and then spitting out the minutes for the meeting. It does take extra effort. It's not ready. It's not at prime time.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent.
Barry and I have had some learning curves.
Yeah.
So the new, the future role of, you know, when committees form and you're gonna have a secretary and that's always a, you know, kind of often a thankless task to volunteer for that. In the future, it might be two years from now, five years from now, basically that person's function is some computer program is gonna generate a draft of the notes and then a human reviews it to make sure.
Exactly. This should always be a human factor to review some of the notes that come out of the transcript.
Oh, yeah. Uh, but that's, that's what I've done for the last two meetings for this.
All right. Tim can lead the charge.
Yeah, just, just add a few, few cents on that. Um, yeah, the future is here. It's just a matter of using the right model. And there's a lot of different models out there and they're very, they can do much better drafting of minutes than humans can when you use the right model. So yeah, partnering with, with Jay and getting this right and making sure that we have a good invest, good foundation and making it as automatic as possible. So that it reduces the overhead for a lot of, you know, committees struggle with minutes and they struggle with these things. How do I get my meeting started? You wait, you know, dealing with technology, they shouldn't have to do that. So uh, Jay's been a great partner in making this as automatic as possible. So, yeah.
All right, so how about this? We'll, we'll, if we get a number by our October seventh meeting, or you need to have a couple of days before so that it's in the packet for the October seventh meeting. And then we'll consider that. If it ends up, you're still, you know, sharpening the pencil. I don't feel too bad about just having the article say a sum of money and then you make, you enter.
Then do the motion.
You do the motion. Yeah.
With the number in it.
Yeah.
So it works.
But remember, there has been some past criticism of that, because then people don't know what it is until last minute, but then we do our very best to post.
Try to get motions out there ahead of time too.
We could always do a printed handout of the, of the board or something. If we ended up doing something down that path, we could, we could add clarity to it if that's what, the way we'd have to go.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be working with the vendors over the next few weeks. So I'm, I'm hoping we can have something before that timeline as well. So.
Exciting.
Yep, very much so. Any other questions?
Uh, no. All right. So I guess we, we hold off on voting for this, on voting on this until the seventh, because you know whether there's a, a number or not. Yes, Al?
Yeah, can we take a five minute break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is still taking this one somewhere?
No. I think there, I think there may be another, an updated version. I had an email that was sent, I think, late yesterday. But I'm not sure there's a whole lot of change to it. I think it's pretty close to finished. Okay, so we'll wait on this one as well? Yeah. Okay, so then that brings us to the Town Government Structure Committee. So Al and I have worked on this. We have one language point where I think we have. I don't, I'm still making up my mind, but um, it has to do with the appointing authority. So again, the background to this, you know, there are some things we want to accomplish in, in the long run. We know we have some longer term challenges of, you know, succession planning, um, citizen engagement. Too many elected boards, not enough. We have so many different kind of fiefdoms. We could make things more efficient, you know, in the annual report you turn open, there's actually an organization chart of the town and it's no rational person is sitting down to design a functioning town. You know, efficient town would create a chart like that. It's just evolved over history, right?
So whichever one of you explains the time, and you should hold up that as you're talking.
No, absolutely, yeah.
I'm not joking either.
Yeah. So we, um, we talked to Jay Tallerman, who's got experience doing this before, gave us a couple of suggestions. One of them was really interesting was Holliston that had done something like this. So, so you know, the charge of this committee is to look at things like expanding or reducing the number of elected positions, moving to a town manager form of government, and then considering maybe representative town meeting or allowing remote participation voting at town meeting. I think that probably requires some state level of approval, but um, other towns I think are doing this. So Al, you wanna chime in here?
Yeah, I think the, the impetus for this, I think, is, is multifold. As you, as you mentioned, you know, I think we have too many committees. The thing that actually sort of animates me is that we have too many uncontested elections. And I think that's. And I think that's very unhealthy. Because what it effect means is that, you know, the substantial authorities that come along with having an elected position, although I sometimes wonder whether we have any authority at all, are, are really being given to effectively volunteers. And I think that's not a healthy thing for democracy and so, you know, potentially reducing the number of elected positions is something that I think is at least worth a, a fulsome debate. Yeah, I think the one question I would have is whether, you know, this committee should be appointed by this board or whether it should be appointed by the moderator. And I think that's, that's, I think, open for discussion. Alan Belnyak forwarded me a very interesting article that, you know, Sudbury and I believe it's Lincoln are, are looking at doing town meeting where you can have remote participation. And people keep asking about it and so, you know, we ought to at least take a good hard look at it because it's not like we're getting huge turnouts at town meeting unless there's something that really motivates people. So I, I, I think every ten to twelve, fifteen years, we should probably do something like this. The last time we did this, we wrote the town administrator bylaw. And I think it's time to take another look at this. I think the matter of having a town manager is, is front and center as well. So this is a, uh, this is a multi-year undertaking and, uh, I think we would hopefully make suggestions to town meeting and, and propose legislation.
And another point to consider is the select, we could just do this ourselves. We could just create an ad hoc committee. And, but the reason why we felt that this makes sense is, you know, ultimately, any of the recommendations that this type of committee is gonna come back would need to be approved by town meeting. And rather than have, I think it makes sense to ask town meeting to partner in this and to get some early buy-in for the idea that in a year or two, we should be considering some big structural changes to streamline the town government.
So I hear you, um, but let me play devil's advocate. What if it fails? We give up?
I have thought of that.
I mean, we really need to do this.
Yeah. We could still do it. I don't think it's going to fail.
Okay.
Just put it that way.
It shouldn't.
We know we've got some.
Excuse me, if it fails, we can always try again in a year or two.
About hire a consulting firm to do this instead of a committee.
Well, we have thought about that and then, um, you know, you could have the two work in conjunction with each other, but I don't think having, spending a lot of money on something like this makes a lot of sense. And sometimes where things are kind of more driven from the bottom up, right, experience. I mean, the best type of people to serve on this board would be some of the people that have maybe been on some of the most responsible boards over time. Former members of the select board and planning board and.
Advisory, but, and I agree with you. Um, so Marguerite, I'd say that this is a case where you really do want what Andrew just said. You want people who really know this town. And because I don't think you want an outside consultant to come in and start making these, even if they're right, even if they got good suggestions, I think they, they would not be met with, um, a whole lot of, um, support.
And part of the work that the committee should be encouraged to do is to do some research on what other towns do, which is some of the things that a consultant would do except charging money for it, right?
Yeah, the committee can always come back and ask for some money if they, they really think they need technical expertise. But I think the Mass Municipal Association actually has a lot of resources that are available that without having to spend a lot of money.
And I think one of you two can make a pretty good case on this, so I am fairly confident too. It's not like you're deciding anything. You're just saying, let's engage a committee to come back with some recommendations. You can say no to those recommendations, but why would you say no to at least looking at it?
Yes. So how do you feel? About, how does the board feel about having the select board being the appointing authority or the moderator?
I feel strongly select board.
So do I.
I don't know if I have an opinion.
I think in a perfect world, I would prefer the moderator to do this only because some, some of the, uh, some of the changes may affect this board and how it operates and so, uh, but on the other hand, you know, we might want to consider a, a split one where, you know, there are seven members, uh, you know, three are appointed by the moderator, four are appointed by the select board, something like that. Or, you know, uh, that can get you messy. I, I can go either way. That's, that's not a.
That got messy with the public works planning board, remember that one? So.
Oh, yeah.
I just want, and you know, select board shouldn't be on it, um, so they, they welcome to come back and say, get rid of the select board if that's what they think we should, should, should happen.
Okay.
Yeah, we might want to stipulate that no current elected official shall serve on the board.
All right. Um, do you want to put that in the language of the article?
See here.
Is Senator Eldridge the one that, um, has proposed the, uh, remote participation? I read an article recently. I think his name was mentioned.
I don't know.
I, I think that's what Al, um, mentioned about Alan Oniak wrote or wrote.
That's a topic where there's, uh, you know, well-trod turf. The, the committee, the first thing they should do is just pull together all. There have been so many towns that have had committees like this. You pull together some best practices and I honestly don't know whether this is something where you need to petition the legislature to do it before you can do it or not, but.
I think it's, I think it's novel in the state if I'm correct right now. It's not approved in any capacity for remote meetings, so it's.
That's what Taggart has said in recent when he's been asked. He's been asked about this and people.
I'm ready with an amendment.
Okay.
All right, so, um, it says, "The committee shall consist of seven registered voters, comma." This is the amendment, "None of whom shall be current elected officials, comma, appointed by the select board." Yeah, it's.
That's, I think all just elected is.
If, if we, if, if we, uh, choose appointed, people will, will never have anybody to, uh, fill, fill the role.
No, just currently elected officials.
Well.
Sorry. So in other words, if you're currently serving, like say, on advisory and.
Advisory is their own bylaw that prohibits them from being on a lot of the committees, so they could be on this one if it's a, um, temporary committee.
Yeah, advisory is not elected.
Okay, I guess I'm not clear on why you wouldn't have someone elected on it, but you would have someone appointed on it.
Well, the reason to not have somebody elected is because we're gonna be talking about.
Making the board powerful or less powerful, you know? Having more responsibility, less responsibility, so you'd get a little more unbiased view if you didn't have an elected.
But if they're appointed, wouldn't it, I mean, it seems like you're serving, I, I don't, not understanding why there's a difference.
I don't think we're necessarily talking about appointed committees in, in this. I think we're talking about the big issues of, of the structure of, of government. So, you know, uh, I, I'm okay with that.
I'll defer to you, but I, I still don't see quite the difference, but.
Okay, so how about this? With Al's amendment, which we can put in the, um, version that we sign on October seventh, I move that the select board support Article eleven at town meeting.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? All right. Okay, and Article twelve, this has been added new. This is, I think, a, a placeholder, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it'll either be actionable on October seventh or it won't, and this has to do with the police lieutenants union?
Correct.
Okay.
And this would just fund it the first year? That's what the article would do?
Yes, so same as any contract, you've got to appropriate and, and the first year and then that binds the successor years for the company.
But how can you get this done? You gotta sit down and negotiate this, right?
I've got two meetings this week. We'll find out. I'm not sure the path forward, but I'll have a better idea by the end of this week.
Okay, so that sounds rushed to me.
I, I think it is, but I don't know the scope of what we're looking at yet. So I can, I can tell you more after we meet this week.
I'd much rather do that annual town meeting, so it affects, you know, the money is July first, because we've got the budget set.
Yeah.
All right, so I think that, that's it for our discussion. All right. So moving on to reports. We already had the report about the restoration of the Lundblatt monument, um, CPC vacancy. Uh, Brett Peters notified us that he is stepping down from his position in the CPC. He's not stepping down from his position on the stewardship committee. And just on behalf of the board, want to thank Brett for his service to the CPC. And I believe since he was a select board appointed member, that means there's a vacancy on that committee for a select board pointed person, so it's good for members to think about, you know, if there's someone you think could be, uh, good in this position, reach out to them, let them know about this opportunity. Two other things quickly that are not on the, uh, printed agenda. The tricentennial committee's ice cream social was rained out. Um, so. Make sure I get the date correctly. The rescheduled date is Sunday, September twenty-eighth in the afternoon, I think, two to four P M. And there'll be, um, publicity about that, so hope everyone can attend. And then Kathy, do you want to speak to the, um, school visit third grade?
So we did this last year. I know Al and I did one. I forget who did. So the third grade wants to come back. They said they loved it, so there's eight third grade rooms that want to come back the week of October thirteenth. Um, and they want to bring, um, it sounds like three times, so there's like, I guess, three classes, three classes, two classes. So we need volunteers and dates. We need to get back and tell them who's going to do it from the select board and what the date and time is, so we can work around our schedules. I'm out of town that whole week, so I'm sorry. I'm out of this, so it's gonna have to be.
I mean, this is something we can probably organize by email, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can just start thinking about it. I think it, uh, it's about an hour, maybe, so.
I know I've done it before with, Al did a great job, uh, you know, with, with the kids. I really enjoyed doing it with Al last time.
Yes, they just walk up from Woodward and they come in here and.
Yep.
To, 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 about government.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm the grandfather of a third grader, so I'm.
All right. Yeah.
All right, so somebody's gonna organize this and get back to the two teachers?
Yeah.
I can volunteer to do it.
Great. Okay, then, um, members report. Al, I'll turn it over to you for the Eagle Scout ceremony.
Sure.
Um, I attended the Eagle Scout ceremony for Henry Gottstich. Uh, Henry, um, did as his service project, he built a sensory garden at Save a Dog, which was a substantial undertaking. It's, uh, one that allows dogs that are kept in kennels to essentially, uh, encounter different types of environments, uh, to, um, help them ease their stress. Uh, I have a deep background in scouting, so I found that particularly satisfying. Um, and so I'm gonna congratulate Henry publicly. He's now off in Cardiff, Wales, studying computer science.
Can I add to this? Because of his project, you know, he was at the transfer station one day. I now have two new dogs. I mean, this is true. We went up there. I'm looking at it and he had this poster of the dogs up there. I said, are those all available? We lost our board colleagues about five years ago. And then Sam Stivers is there. He goes, Kathy, just so you know, John was up here and he was interested too. So we ended up with two dogs because of that project, so, um.
So we can blame Henry.
Okay, and, and Kathy, uh, report on Atlantic Management Plan Project or was that all?
I've already done it. Yes, I did it.
Good.
Was what I did.
All right. Mark?
So I just wanted to, uh, to acknowledge the efforts of Chief Newell and Chief Pantini, um, uh, for conducting the annual nine eleven ceremony down at Public Safety. Um, this was the twenty-fourth, uh, anniversary. I can't believe it's been twenty-four years, um, since the, since the attacks. Um, but, um, um, smaller group than we've had, um, in the past, but, um, um, it was, it was very nice and Chief Newell did a very nice job. The chiefs alternate each year as to who is in charge of the ceremony. Um, and Chief Newell, um, did, uh, most of the speaking this year and that did a very nice job, so. Um, appreciate, um, and, and we do, I think, have one of the nicer, um, nine eleven, uh, memorials. Um, you know, around, um, it is a very nice, um, memorial out in front of the station. Um, so, um, just want to acknowledge their efforts and thank them for continuing to do that and to, uh, uh, to remember, uh, remembering the events of that day.
Thank you. Okay, so moving, moving to the consent agenda. Yes? Oh, that's right. I'm sorry about that.
Can we do that one?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, as many know, Al, do you remember John? Was he on advisory with you? He was with me too. So John Boyardi died this week. He was eighty-eight, eighty-nine. And so lived, lived a long life, um, but he served the town well. He was on advisory, sounds like with Al and me for, for many years. So he had to been on for a long time because Al and I were on advisory together. So, um, I remember him as being quite a character. Um, he had, um, um, he definitely had his point of view as far as some, some things as far as budget goes, but he was certainly, he participated. He, he, he was fun to be with, always, um, did a good job, always came, so. Um, he certainly served this town well.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, um, John was a fellow fiscal conservative and, uh, so I greatly appreciated his input and, um, you know, he, he, he definitely looked after the taxpayers' money and, but with a real sense of humor and, and goodwill, so, you know, I, uh, he definitely served the town well for many, many years.
Okay, now, now I'll turn to the consent agenda. I am gonna hold, um, the open session meeting minutes from August first and August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Any other holds?
I've got, I mean, I'm doing twenty-six too, but I didn't read the second, so I hope somebody did, um, that we can approve it, but I haven't read the second.
The September second meeting?
Yeah, let's. I tried, but I couldn't get to him.
Uh, it was basically just a discussion of the, the warrant was the, the big thing.
Yeah, so if you wanted to find, just saying, so somebody's read them, I, I haven't.
Any other holds? On the consent agenda? Okay. All right, so here, here's my edits to the August first, uh, minutes. This, it was a remote meeting and I don't think it's, that's made clear in the minutes where it says, "Location McCalliff Hearing Room." Um, I think you just strike that and just say, "Remote meeting." And for August twenty-sixth on line fifty-four, this is in the discussion about not extending the MSBA grant, uh, where it says three quarters, it should say two thirds.
Yep.
And then just to be more precise on line sixty-nine, instead of request an extension from the MSBA for a new four grade school, I'd say request from the extension for eligibility for a grant for the proposed new four grade school. So those are the edits that I have.
You might as well stay on line seventy. That, that motion failed. I think it's zero five zero, not zero zero five. Right?
Yep.
And I got a few more on that.
That would be a strange vote if everyone abstained.
Yeah, I know. So zero five zero, Bridget. Okay, so can I keep going, Andrew?
Yep.
All right, so line, um, forty-one, Committee Sharper, Marguerite, Andrew, Sam, and so after Sam, Sharper, Marguerite, Andrew, Sam, and I appreciate, so I said, "And I appreciate your support from the select board for the committee." And then, let's, excuse me, for the committee's work. Lastly, I do wish Mr. Hamilton had respected the work done by the committee and its subcommittee, so change his to its. And then line fifty-five, he added that. Actually, that's fine. It's, that's fine. Nevermind. That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the, um, open session meeting minutes from August first and August twenty-sixth as amended?
Second.
All those in favor? And then, uh, okay, we held B, so.
But then.
Yeah, how about this? Well, so then.
I understand everyone.
I moved that we, I approve the, um, open session meeting minutes from May ten and September second? Yeah, how about this? Well, so then, I move that we, I approve the open session meeting minutes from May ten and September second?
Second.
All those in favor? And then I move that we approve consent agenda items C, D, E, F, and G?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, and then, Tim, you wanted to speak to B?
I was just kind of against the entering into the agreement from the beginning, so I just really wasn't wanting to support it at the moment, so.
Okay.
There is a typo on it too, Andrew. E, it should say, "The employer shall file a signed copy of this voluntary recognition agreement, not voluntarily recognition."
Let me, let me pull it out there. Can you just point me where we, where?
B?
E, okay.
So it should say not voluntarily, just voluntary.
Yes, that's right.
So Tim, you are doing what?
I mean, I'm still kind of not in support of this at, at this point in time, so I was, I'm leaning against supporting it.
Okay, well, we talked about this and in an executive session and made our decision. So this is just effectuating that we've already pretty much decided and communicated to the lieutenants. So I move that we approve consent agenda item B.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. So I think that means next item is a discussion of the extension for the pre-K, pre-K eight school committee building committee. Remember, we set up the committee and then the charge was through August, then we extended it. And we all felt that was a little too ambitious. It was extended through September. Then something pretty significant happened in between then, which is we voted not to.
Ask MSBA for an extension.
MSBA. And so I got a request from the chair and also from Tim that, you know, they were looking for an extension through October fifteenth. And this is with the, the goal of finalizing the decision matrix and maybe coming to us for a presentation at our October seventh meeting. And, you know, since this would be the second extension, I want this to just be the last one there and we get the extension. You know, if you have the appointments expire by the fifteenth, that would give this committee at least, you know, one week after the presentation to the select board on the seventh to, you know, finalize minutes. And then this will be an opportunity to hear, you know, the work product, the deliverable from the committee and also thank them for the work they did over the summer. So I'm supportive of that and how do other members of the board feel? But Tim, is there anything you want?
Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna add is the committee's planning to finish pretty much all the work by the end of the month. So the goal is everything's put together, everything's organized. It's just the next select board meeting is the seventh. So to get in front of this board without scheduling another special meeting, and this is why the, the request made sense to us, was to ask, that way we could just do it the next scheduled meeting, give a week to clean everything up and then.
October seventh, I'm making.
It is what it is.
That makes sense. Sounds like you agree that this won't, there will be no further extension. This is it, okay? So I'm, I'm okay with that.
Tim, are you thinking that the whole committee would come or just a couple representatives?
We haven't really discussed that. I would imagine that anybody that would like to come would come when we'd post it as a joint meeting. And then if we don't have it for them, then we just have a couple people to talk about it.
So then let's just stay in touch about that because that may affect, you know, if everyone, the whole committee's gonna come, probably makes sense to notice it early under scheduled appointments. And then I think the seventh, the next real thing we're gonna do is sign the warrant. That's the main thing we're gonna do.
The next meeting for us, I believe, I don't remember, it's Tuesday, I think, the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth. It's right near the end of the month, but it's before the end of the month. We have one more meeting.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
So the, the current charge, what I would propose is where it says comparison matrix and it currently says, "By September thirtieth, the school building committee shall compile a comparison matrix." We just extend that to October seventh?
Yeah, we just said the fifteenth, make everything end at the same time, because if there's any more need from any comments that this board has, it gives the opportunity to address that.
Okay, all right, so we can just have both dates extended through October fifteenth?
Yeah, and then that way everything is nice and clean, that way there's, if there's any needs for updates, it can be addressed.
That sound good, everyone? So I'm, I move that the September thirty deadlines in the committee's charge be extended to October seventh?
Fifteenth.
I'm sorry, October fifteenth.
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor? Okay. All right. I'm, I move that the board enter into executive session per mass general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, and not return to open session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel exemption two. And to discuss strategy with respect to litigation exemption three, as the chair has determined, an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. And we have to do this by roll call vote. First, we need a second?
Oh, second.
Yeah, okay, so a roll call vote, denning.